Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas land, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one and safe, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. We get started this morning. We do have a quorum. Commissioner Thomas is out with strep, so if you do see him, steer clear. But before I do call it order, I want to remind everyone that early voting is going on, so if you haven't, please do. We've got until through Saturday, I believe, and then we have Tuesday. So be sure and take the opportunity to do that, and don't forget, we are vote centers now. So, first item is to call it order. We do have a quorum. First item is citizens' comments, and we do have a few. Do we have any more? We have four in total. Three wish to speak when the item is called. We have one that wishes to speak at the beginning of the meeting. It's Mr. David Skanks.
Skanks.
Skanks, if you would, please come forward. And if you would, give your address for the record, your name and your address for the record.
Thank you, Judge. County Commissioners, my name is David Skanks. My address is 148 Robin Hood Way in Gun Barrel City. I am the mayor of Gun Barrel City. My purpose for coming here today is to ask for your help. In December of 2019, we submitted our application and a check for $5,000 to the county attorney to have us...
Mayor, I didn't know. You can only speak to what is on the agenda.
You don't have a citizen's comment? Okay.
It is, but it is directly to what is related to the agenda. I apologize.
Okay, well, I apologize. In our forum, we can have citizen's comments to put things on the agenda for the next meeting, and that's what I was hoping to do.
Okay, I do apologize. And what we work with here is that you can speak to anything that is on the agenda, and any work that is done to get on the agenda is done through the Commissioner or myself.
Understood. Okay, in that case, I'll talk on item 14.
Okay, thank you.
Taking action on agreement with Animal Shelter Services with the Humane Society of City Creek Lake. Gun Barrel City would like to be part of the Athens Humane Society, which you're looking at turning that over to. We put an application in in December. That application came back with really very little explanation, other than that y'all are going to hear about changing over management of this society here in Athens, and I do not care who manages the society. We need the quarantine services that you provide in Athens. We need the after-hours services that you provide in Athens, because Humane Society of City Creek Lake provides neither. So far this year to date, we've had six animal bites in Gun Barrel, so you can see the need for quarantine is important to us. Quarantine costs us anywhere from $300 to $500 an animal to do outside of y'all's services. So we're more than willing to pay our $5,000 fee, which is what we were asked for in that contract, and we're more than willing to pay that fee. We will continue to use the Humane Society of City Creek Lake and Thule as our primary shelter, but we do need those additional services. And I would... The county attorney rejected our application. They said it would have to go to the fourth commissioner's court. I don't understand why. Our citizens pay $1.9 million in property tax to this county, and I do not understand why we're being denied based on a management decision of who you helped to manage it. So I would like for a... I would like for a commissioner to get back to me and give me that answer, but more so, I'd rather like to see us get past this management issue and let us move forward. But thank you.
Thank you. As I stated earlier, the other four would like to speak when their selected item comes up. So item one is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court on February the 11th, 2020, and I'm going to ask at this time that we pass on this until the next meeting, given that Commissioner Thomas is not here today and last... or two weeks ago, Commissioners Thulie and McCam are gone to conference. So McCam will pass on that. Which brings us to item number two is consider and take action to proclaim March the 2nd, 2020, as Texas Independence Day. And I believe we have... There we go.
Where's your tie?
I got kids.
Two and three have...
And I've had mine for 20 years.
You gave him this tie. We were substituted this year. That's over 10 years ago.
Commissioner Lawrence cannot borrow yours.
He got two of them.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, before actually do the proclamation, as usual, you always expect some kind of little story. I think Charles Moon has started this years ago. Well, the one I have today is when Texas was a republic before it became a state, it had four presidents. Sam Houston and then somebody else, and I've forgotten his name already, and then Sam Houston again, and then, of course, the fourth one was the last one. Does anybody know who that was?
Jones. Anderson Jones.
You win.
Lamar.
Lamar, you're right.
He was born in great Barrington, Massachusetts in 1798. He received his M.D. degree, came to Mazora, Texas in 1833, practiced medicine, and made success. He joined the Texas Army in 1836, fought as a private in Sherman's 2nd Regiment in the Battle of San Jacinto on April the 21st, 1836. He was elected to the House of Representatives from Mazora to the 2nd Congress in 1837. In 1838, Sam Houston appointed Anderson Jones as Republicans' Minister of the United States. He went to Washington, D.C., and began his strategy for the annexation of Texas. He was elected a senator, served in 4th and 5th Congress. He married Mary Smith McCrory, who later became the first president of the Daughters of the Republic of Texas. In 1841, Sam Houston appointed him Secretary of State, and then he was elected the last president of the republic. The Congress concluded the annexation of Texas on December the 29th, 1845. On February the 19th, 1846, at a formal ceremony in Austin, President Jones, better known as the Architect of Annexation, lowered the Lone Star Flag of Texas and proclaimed, "The Republic of Texas is no more." He died in Houston in 1858. He is the only president of a sovereign nation buried in Houston or Harris County, Texas. That's my story for today. And next time, I hope you'll know who Anderson Jones is.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, very much. It is always a great pleasure to have y'all come before us, and a great honor for us to be involved in keeping Texas history alive. You know, this is day three of the siege of the Alamo.
Right. Well, my ancestor died in Alamo, along with his brother-in-law. He was one of the 32 immortals that Gonzalez went to answer Austin's cry with a letter that he sent out. This is the only group that responded, no others. So, anyway, you have the proclamation?
Yes, sir, we do.
Do you want to read it, or do you want me to read it?
It's your pleasure, if you would like me to read it or yourself.
Go right ahead, Your Honor.
Okay.
Since you don't have your tie.
Whereas on March the 2nd, 2020, is the 184th anniversary of Texas Independence Day, when 56 brave Texians and Tejanos met at Washington on the Brazos to declare Texas an independent nation, signing the Declaration of Independence on the date of March the 2nd, 1836. And whereas these 56 men signed the Declaration of Independence and continued to draft a constitution pledging their lives and their fortunes in securing a free and independent Texas despite the disastrous events occurring at the Alamo Angoliat. And whereas remembering March the 2nd, 1836, every year is necessary and proper to remind the citizens of Henderson County, Texas of the sacrifices made by our ancestors, the valiant men and women who risked their lives and fortunes to gain an independent Texas and establish a new republic that 10 years later became the 28th state of the United States of America, our beloved state, Texas. Whereas the citizens of Henderson County wish to join the Sons of the Republic of Texas and all citizens of Texas in observance and remembrance of the 184th anniversary of this important event in Texas history. Therefore, we, the Commissioner's Court of Henderson County, Texas, proclaim March the 2nd, 2020, Texas Independence Day in Henderson County, and urge all citizens of the county to celebrate this historic event that gave us an independent Texas and republic. Are there any comments?
I move to approve the proclamation to make January... to make March 2nd, 2020, Texas Independence Day.
Second. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor. Item passes. Thank you very much. We do appreciate the effort that the Sons of the Republic of Texas do. We appreciate our inclusion as honorary members as of last year, and thank you very much for helping keeping history alive. And I am sorry about the tie. I could not believe I walked off without it.
Sorry. My name is Gene Eldrum, and I'm the president of the James George Hospital Number 59, Sons of the Republic of Texas, and we are here in Athens. Even though I don't live here, we're here.
Thank you.
I see who's loyal.
Item three. Item three. Consider and take action to proclaim March the 2nd, 2020, as Read Across America Day.
Good morning. My name is Beth Falk, and I'm the president of the Public Library Fund. We are pleased this centennial year of the library to celebrate Read Across America Day with Athens Independent School District on March 2nd. We have invited author Nancy Chernin to read her book, "The William Hoy Story: How a Deaf Baseball Player Changed the Game." Ms. Chernin will speak at each elementary campus, and the PLF will be providing every classroom and library with a copy of the book. I would also like to invite you to continue the centennial celebration of our library this year at our annual Books in Bloom event on Friday, April 17th, where author Kathleen Kent will discuss her newly released book, "The Burn." Thank you for letting me read this proclamation today. Whereas for 100 years, the Henderson County Library, with the support of the Public Library Fund, has endeavored to improve the literacy skills and reading opportunities for all members of our community. And whereas the Henderson County Library is deeply committed to promoting reading as a catalyst for our children's academic success, their preparation for America's future careers, and their ability to contribute productively to our democratic society and beyond. And whereas Read Across America Day, March 2nd, 2020, is a national celebration to encourage reading and to recognize the shared involvement in the education of the students of Athens, Henderson County, and Texas. Therefore, be it resolved that the Public Library Fund, along with the elected officials of Henderson County, enthusiastically endures the Henderson County Library in its celebration of Read Across America, and we proudly stand committed to supporting our library and our schools in their mission to advance the reading ability of our children and to spark a lifelong passion for literature and learning.
This is the centennial year for the library?
Yes, sir. The birthday is March 31st.
March 31st. That's fantastic. Well, it is a wonderful thing that the Library Fund, our library staff, the community, and the way that they have supported this facility for so long. As one that grew up getting to take books off the bookmobile in the '70s that would show up from town to town, it is a wonderful thing that we've continued to support and to only make stronger through the efforts of everyone, the entire community. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
We appreciate the service of the board members.
Thank you.
You've been around here a long time. Did that bookmobile have a horse in front of it?
No, but I think it had a Texas flag on it, a tie.
Thank y'all for what you've done over the last 100 years and your preceding boards, and look for more great things coming from the library, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come here.
I know Ken was a big fan of the library, as I am also, and I'd like to make a motion to proclaim March the 2nd, 2020, as Read Across America Day.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to declare March the 2nd, 2020, as Read Across America Day in Henderson County. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Consider and take action to approve refunds from the Henderson County Tax Office. Cindy.
Good morning. I have two refunds this morning totaling $5,792.05. We have one refund that is just an overpayment of taxes. He paid on a credit card, and he paid too much. And then the second one is an ARB adjustment.
Questions for Ms. Edwards?
I'm making a motion to approve the refund from the Henderson County Tax Office.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the tax refunds from the Henderson County Tax Office. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you. Item five. Consider and take action to appoint two members to the Chandler Tax Increment Financing Board. Gentlemen, the county and the City of Chandler and Trinity Valley Community College all went together and allowed for the creation of this TIF, is what it's otherwise known, as an investment vehicle for growth. And we did this a number of years ago. Former Commissioner Lawrence was here at that time and is actually has been a member on that board since its creation. Commissioner, do you remember when we did that?
Been over three years, Judge. It was when I was still Commissioner, and I've been gone since January three years.
Okay. This has been a very important tool for that area. It has provided for quite a bit of infrastructure growth that otherwise would not have been capable and wouldn't have been able to reach. Our current appointees, as I said, is Commissioner Lawrence and everyone, I believe, knows Mr. Coy Ellis. We, in the makeup of this board, the county has two positions. One, that is appointed directly by the county, and then the recommendation of a director who lives within the City of Chandler. And Commissioner McCam, you have looked into even greater detail than I have. Is there anything?
You pretty well stated everything that we're trying to do here, and we would like to put Ronnie Lawrence back on the board as the county representative, and Coy Ellis on the board as the Chandler City representative.
I really agree with that, the history that is there and the knowledge, and it is county money. Because to add a little background, when a TIF is created, whatever that tax rate or that tax revenue is that the county generates, it continues to get. Any increase in growth of the tax revenue is put into the TIF for the improvements, and I think it's been a fantastic tool for the area. Any questions?
If there is none, I move to reinstate Ronnie Lawrence as the county representative and Coy Ellis as the county city of Chandler representative to the TIF board.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Thulie, to reappoint Ronnie Lawrence as the county representative and Mr. Coy Ellis as the county city representative. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor. I would like to say, Commissioner, thank you for your time. I know they don't pay very well, these appointed positions, and we appreciate the efforts that you've put in managing the county's money that is involved in that. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for letting me do that.
Item number six. Consider and take action to approve the 2020 fire department contracts. And gentlemen, this is the time in the show where we work with this contract. What we will do here today is approve the contract in form and send them out, and once they are signed by the entities, once they come in, then we'll sign them. So, Fire Marshal?
Good morning, Corey. You pretty much said all of it there. These contracts are generated through my office. I send them out to each individual fire department, get the required signatures from the fire chief, and then I do checking to make sure that some of the provisions are met inside the contract, and then I forward those on to be signed by the judge. But those contracts do have to be approved by the court every year, so that's what I'm here today to do. If you're familiar with the contracts, in past years, nothing has changed in the contract except for the dollar amount this year. That was due to the loss of one of our fire departments that is no longer a fire department, so now instead of 23, we have 22. So the amount of money went up a little bit that we give to each fire department. And I'll answer...
What is the timeframe on them getting these contracts back to us?
It varies. As soon as the court approves these contracts, I usually send them out the same day. Some of them prefer mail, some of them just come up to the office and pick it up. But I have seen contracts go all the way into December before they get them back to us. There's no stipulations in the contract, only the amount of time they have to sign them and get them back to us.
So the top of the date says January the 1st, 2020. Is there a reason why we don't do this, like, at the end of the last year, for them to be ready at January the 1st, 2020?
There's been several reasons over the years. We're used to getting the contracts out for the month of March. That's when they're used to getting it. There's also something along the lines of the payments with the fire departments and how it's lined up, because a lot of them use this funding to pay various payments on fire trucks and things like that. It is something that I want to work towards, is getting the contracts signed for the prior year, for the upcoming year, I guess.
Didn't Commissioner Geislin at one time state that if they didn't have it turned in by a certain time, they'd lose their money?
I don't know what Commissioner Geislin stated, but there's nothing in the contract that states that. I do know that if we don't have a contract signed by the end of the budget year where this money comes from, I'm assuming there would be no money to give them.
This is, you said, increasing the dollar amount?
Yes, sir.
What was... Do you know what the previous dollar amount was?
The previous dollar amount was $10,586 per department, and we've increased it to
That's just by spreading the money out from the loss of that one?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The budget that the court sets every year at that set amount, the money is spread out between the 22 fire departments and the Fire Chiefs Association, who we also give money to.
What is... Excuse me, what is that dollar amount?
The dollar amount to the Fire Chiefs Association isn't even $9,000.
Any further questions?
I move to approve the 2020 fire department contracts.
Second motion.
If I could, with the judge's...
With the judge's authorization to sign.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Cheney, to approve the 2020 Henderson County fire contracts with the volunteer fire departments, with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. Item seven. Consider and discuss presentation by Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Ma, LLP, for delinquent court fines of the justices of the peace courts.
Thank you. Judge McKinney, Commissioners, thanks for having us here this morning. What I want to do is explain a little bit about...
What's your name?
My name is Doug Burnside. I'm a partner with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Ma. What I want to do is tell you about who we are and what we do for the county. Again, my name is Doug Burnside, and we have, as part of our collection team here with us today, Patrick Woods, who is an attorney in our Tyler office. We have Scott Muha, who is our Director of Business Development. He's in our Arlington office. And Melissa Pace, who's our client liaison, and she's in our Arlington office also. I'm in our Garland office. What do we do for the county? Well, we collect the delinquent court fines and fees for Henderson County. We've been doing this for JP Precinct 2 since 2013, and for the other courts since 2017. So how do we do these collections? What we do is we make sure we open up lines of communication with the delinquent defendants. We make sure we communicate with them. We don't have a lien securing any property, so we have to let them know what their debt obligations are and what the consequences are of not paying them. So what that means is we send out letters, we make phone calls, and we engage in other collection activities. For the county, we've sent out almost 59,000 demand letters and made more than 26,000 phone calls. And once we have those communications in, that's when we can communicate with the defendants, get them to either pay their delinquent debt, or there are other methods that they can resolve the case, whether we go to the court, get jail time served, get their fines reduced, do community service, that kind of stuff, just to get the debts off the books for the county. We have just started in the last week the Warrant Roundup, which is a statewide effort to promote collections of these types of debts. And the activities that we take to do that are, you know, we do local advertisements. For instance, here in Henderson County, we've run an ad in the Athens Review. We are also, as of today, going to each of the courts and putting up posters around to let people know that the Warrant Roundup is going on and the consequences if they don't pay these fines that they could result in their arrest if there's a warrant issued for them. As for how we've done on our collections, in the years we've been collecting, we've collected a little over $1.7 million for the county. We've also had just under $1.2 million of accounts that have been resolved, and again, that's fine reductions, dismissals, jail credits, community service, and cases that the courts have recalled. So we've had a total of $2.95 million that we've resolved out of the $5.8 million that's been turned over to us, for just over 50%. Does anyone have any questions?
Let's see. Precinct 2 went on in 13, and then the other four came on in 17. And you assign... And assigned to you was $5.8 million worth of...
Since that time, we've had amounts turned over, and there's constantly new amounts being turned over also.
My question is, is that this is all debts, not just from 13 forward? This included previous to that, is that correct?
That's correct. That included old debts. I mean, they go back... How far back?
Well, each court is... Sorry. Each court is really different. It's up to the judge's course all that they want to keep the collections. But yes, every court, everything that they have currently has been turned over, as stated, we get stuff monthly as well.
Some of this debt is very, very old.
By law, it is within the judge's preview as to directing the collections.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions?
Go ahead.
All right. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Gentlemen, you see what they presented here. It looks like remaining what's been handed to them is 2.9 million. Is that correct? That is still the remaining balance?
Approximately 2.9 million. Yes, sir.
Almost $3 million?
Yep.
Questions?
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at fully collected and liquidated.
Yes, sir.
And nothing fully collected is... And any deal is over 40%? And nothing fully collected is, in any deal, is over 40%. So I'm trying to figure out how we, what do we do to motivate these people to?
Well, this is, again, it's an unsecured debt, meaning we don't have any, and some of these accounts are very, very old. You know, we're finding defendants who are deceased, and once they're deceased, it's uncollectible, and we let the courts know that, and so they do fine reductions. As far as the activities that we're doing, again, it's opening the lines of communication, making the phone calls, sending the letters, doing the skip tracing to make sure we have good addresses for people. A lot of the defendants aren't local, and so they're statewide, so having an active warrant in Henderson County is not really much of a threat for them. And so it's just, you know, communicating with them and trying to convince them they need to pay the debt, you know, it's just, these debts aren't that easy to collect. It's not like for taxes where you have a lien on the property. We don't have anything securing these debts.
What's the percentage of people that you're finding that are deceased?
I don't--
I actually don't have that, but it's something that we could find out.
We could find out and let you know. It's a fairly low percentage.
Well, I mean, I'm sure it's probably 5% or lower, but sure.
Right. But I would add, and some of your directors could probably explain this a little bit more, with recent changes in the legislature, the last year, the last time, and the time before, what we're finding is, I don't know if it's probable to say, but a kinder, gentler way to approach things. So courts now have to send out multiple letters before they can actually even proceed towards their warrant status or send it to us. So we're finding those are a little bit older by the time we get it. Also, our job is also, of course, we want collections, but it's also to resolve the case and try to get this position, so we want to try to get them into the court if they can't just pay it. And that ends up sometimes in top serve or dismissal, or maybe even they're indigent, and so if they're indigent, that means no one gets anything, or community service, kind of the same thing. And because of the changes in these laws now, it's much more about, can you take care of it? We want to make sure that we set you up to succeed, and so I think you will see that that will affect some of the collection numbers. But again, our job is to get them in here, to talk to the judge, to see if they're indigent or if there's something that can be done to help them do the payment plan or what have you. So even payment plans can flip the collections out a little bit further, but I think we'll see the change in that as it's--
I have nothing else, Judge.
One thing I'd like to elaborate on, and Judge Daniels is here with us today as well. He can tell you a great deal about it in the last two sessions. I would dare say that the indigency hearings that the judges are having to hold now, doubled, tripled, Judge?
Probably doubled.
Probably doubled. And that's the changes in the, from the legislature saying you cannot force this mandatory monetary So if the, if you have committed an offense, it's much easier to get off without punishment.
I mean, that is, it is correct.
That is the realization of what the legislation has caused. I know it makes some uncomfortable to say it, but that is the truth.
Correct. And, you know, I don't have the breakdowns of how old some of these cases are, but that's something that we could go back and get free and bring, if that's something that you're interested in, because certainly, unfortunately, that does, you know, affect the, whether or not we can collect or not. If some of these cases are 10 to 15 years old, we, of course, are still trying to find them, and we're doing data research, and we do find them sometimes, but, you know, it's something that they do become uncomfortable because they are so old. So if that's something you're just a little concerned about, right now, too, you can maybe--
On a side note, Sheriff Hillhouse phones him every night, so he might want to work for him.
And we have a great program that we'd love to have, if you can ask us to, we can help each other out.
Just to say, I appreciate y'all working for the taxpayers in Henderson County. I know it's a tremendous problem trying to collect money that's unsecured. I mean, we know that by just loaning some friend's money. We appreciate y'all's work.
You know, I remember the time we didn't have anyone to collect these fines, and it's been a, I think this company's done a good job. I talked to a couple of judges, including Judge Daniel. They're pleased with what they're doing, and just keep up the good work, because it brings in extra revenue to the county, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think it's worth pointing out, you'll remember this, our former auditor and former Commissioner West, and then worked together to create, to find out what the delinquencies were, and it seems like the JPs at that point, back in the mid-2000s, was about at this same level.
Yeah.
Is what I, what I remember. In total, it was about $8 million when you put all the courts together, and I think this is very similar to what it is historically been.
That's what I'm expecting, so it's awesome.
True. Yeah, how do you collect that? Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, and we do, we appreciate y'all's efforts, and of course, the justice courts in this particular instance, and doing their part as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the honor to be here today.
Item eight, consider and take action to accept the racial profiling report from the Henderson County Sheriff's Office for filing purposes only. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court. This is the annual racial profiling report that we are required to submit to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Every agency in the state of Texas is required to submit this report to TCO, and then, once the report has been filed with their, with their agency, then it's also required to be brought before their government, that agency's governing body, to accept for filing purposes. And on our report, it's, it's pretty normal. As far as the numbers, we're still over 80% Caucasian, and that's pretty much where we stand. There was 2,700 traffic stops, or 2,700 contacts, and 2,300, or 2,685 contacts, with 2,347 of those contacts being white or Caucasian. So this is just standard, what we normally see here in Henderson County every year at the Sheriff's Office.
Questions for the sheriff?
I'm making a motion to accept the profiling report from Henderson County Sheriff's Office for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve for filing purposes only the racial profiling report to the Henderson County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, I would like to, the last item on there says, was physical force resulting in bodily injury used during stop?
Yes, sir. That's a new mandate that was added by the legislature that we had to start tracking, and there's 2,762 stops that did not result in bodily injury, and 23 stops that did result in bodily injury, and that could, and that bodily injury could mean to the peace officer or to the defendant.
Right. I think that goes a very long way, that reporting of that goes a very long way in helping negate some of the popular culture belief of law enforcement.
Yes, sir.
So when you're talking 23 injuries out of 2,762 stops, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, consider and take action to sell duty weapon to retiring sheriff's deputy pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 614 dot 051 and 614 dot 503. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Deputy John Haverly retired as of January 31st of 2020, and he requested to purchase his duty weapon that he was carrying when he was a deputy here at the Sheriff's Office. I know the court has done this in the past. Michael Shelley purchased his weapon, and then former Sheriff Ray Nutt purchased his, and the Texas Government Code allows a peace officer to purchase one weapon from the county. And the county paid, it was $409, for the weapon that Deputy Haverly was carrying, so we're asking the court if you would please sell the weapon to, we think a fair market price to Deputy Haverly would be $300.
Questions?
How long did he, was he here?
He was in Henderson County. He spent 17 years here at Henderson County Sheriff's Office. He actually started in Mesquite, spent a few years in Mesquite, came to Athens Police Department, spent several years there, and got a whole bunch of animal control training, and so we swiped him from Athens, and he's been, he finished out his career with us.
I understand this is not anything new. We've done this before.
Correct, yes, sir.
And he meets all the requirements. There's four requirements here in 614.0501, and he meets all those requirements, and so I make a motion to sell the weapon for $300.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the sale of a service weapon to Officer John Haverly in the amount of $300. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Sheriff. Item 10, consider and prove the interlocal agreement between Henderson County and Walnut Creek Cemetery Association, which is a historical cemetery, to repair roadway, install culvert and ditch work, approximately .12 miles of roadway from County Road 1500, located in Precinct One. And I'm sorry, we have--
Dave McDonald.
Dave McDonald with the Cemetery Association.
That's right, yeah. President Walnut Creek Cemetery Association. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners. It's my honor to be here today. Sorry, Commissioner Thomas could not be here today, but probably in our favor that he's not, considering the circumstances. Walnut Creek Cemetery was established as a, back in 1884, actually by my great-great-grandfather. I've served on the Board of Directors here since, oh, gosh, early 1990s. The current roadway in the cemetery is in need of repair. After meeting and doing some research, meeting with Commissioner Thomas, we learned that there is an option to develop an interlocal agreement between Henderson County and the Walnut Creek Cemetery. The purpose of the agreement would be able to seek assistance from the county in utilizing labor and equipment from Precinct One to come in and provide the repair work that's needed, including the installation of a culvert. It's under understanding that any material cost, tangible materials, surfacing materials, asphalt, and so forth, would be the cost of the Cemetery Association. So we're here to, you know, request the interlocal agreement so we could proceed with the repair of the roadwork for this historic cemetery. I would note that it is a historic feature of Henderson County, and on behalf of the Cemetery Board, we appreciate the consideration of the commissioners, Court.
Any questions? Gentlemen, I spoke with Commissioner Thomas previous to this, and this is, this is continuation of our long-held practice in being, in conjunction with it being a historical cemetery, we have that ability to assist with work like this. And Commissioner Thomas was all in favor for it and was requesting that we approve it here today. And if we do, we will need to pass it and approve it with his authorization to sign. Any questions? Entertained motion.
So moved.
I second the motion.
With Commissioner's authorization to sign.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the interlocal agreement with the Walnut Creek Cemetery Association for repairs to roadway, install culvert and ditch work, with Commissioner Thomas's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Item 11, consider and take action to set a public hearing to set a residential speed limit of 20 miles an hour on Pin Oak Drive in the Summerall Division located in Precinct Two. Commissioner Thule?
Yes, Judge and Court, Kevin Romscok, I think is how you say his name, came to my office and gave a, asked about how they could lower their speed limit, and so we gave him the information out on our website. This is in the Summerall Edition, Editions One and Two on Pin Oak Drive. They have the required signatures on this app, and the affidavit signed, and they're having some trouble with some speeding through this subdivision. There's only one lane, one road. So he's done all the required work, and so I believe, March 10th or March 17th? I think it's the date. March 10th is the earliest, March 17th?
March 10th would be the earliest.
So let's do March 17th.
Okay.
So anyway, I'd like to set a public hearing for March the 17th to set a speed limit, 20 mile an hour speed limit in the Summerall Division on Pin Oak Drive.
I think it's important to, normally, the lowest that the county can set a speed limit is 30 miles an hour.
Right.
Unless it is in a residential location and the road is not a major thoroughfare. Transportation Code 545.355 gives that county the authorization, and it has to go through this process of which the petition and so forth for us to get to enact. I believe we've done this once or twice before since we--
Very seldom done, but with the way that this road is concurred and everything, they're having some, some problems.
It is narrow, windy, and only one way in and out, and 80 some odd houses?
About 97, 97 lots.
100 houses. Any questions or comments? Entertained motion.
Judge, I move we set a public hearing for March the 17th, 2020, at 9:20?
Good enough.
9:20. For a residential speed limit of 20 miles an hour on Pin Oak Drive in the Summerall Division located in Precinct Two.
Seconded motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Cheney, to set a public hearing to set a speed limit of 20 miles an hour on Pin Oak Drive located in Precinct Two for March the 17th at 9:20 a.m. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 12, consider and take action to an agreement with Bethel Christian Church to assist in an abatement of a public nuisance on church property located in Precinct Three. Commissioner?
Yes, this is, Court, something that the leadership of the Bethel Christian Church approached me about. They have a structure on the property they believe is a safety concern for them and a public nuisance, children and young people being able to get in this, this structure and possibly falling in on them. And they would like the court to allow me to tear down the structure and stack it, and then they will remove it after I've finished. It is, it's a, across, it's a church-owned property across the street from the, across the county road from the church. It is a structure, and it is in unsatisfactory shape.
And the county attorney, Mr. Davis, are you still here? Oh, there you are. Would you speak to it about the public nuisance nature?
He's moved up to the front row.
Usually, you're on the back row.
Yes, it definitely is a public nuisance. I've looked at the building, familiar with the building, right there at close proximity. It definitely meets all of the elements and criteria to be a public nuisance under the Health and Safety Code.
Okay. Any questions, county attorney? If not?
Hey, non, I'd like to move that the commissioners, Court, allow me to abate the property for Bethel Christian Church.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Cheney, to approve the agreement with the Bethel Christian Church to assist in abating, in abatement of a public nuisance on church property. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 13, consider and take action to accept donations in the name of Judge Richard Sanders for the Henderson County Animal Shelter. Michael?
Yes, Judge, I'm right to y'all again today.
Yes, uh, Judge, I bring to y'all again today, um, another donation, uh, for $735 is, uh, actually been received. I think, uh, the largest portion is through your office, some in mine, of course, in the animal shelter. So I just need to see if we can get your approval on this today.
And gentlemen, our backup in the actual folders of six hundred, $605, uh, we received the additional one yesterday, I believe.
That's correct, yes, Judge.
So that's why the change from 605 to 735. Any comments? Hearing none, entertained motion.
I'm like the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thule, to accept the donation of $735 in the name of County Judge Richard Sanders for the Henderson County Animal Shelter. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Item fourteen is consider and take action on agreement for the animal shel- shelter services with the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. And as I spoke earlier, we do have individuals that wish to speak at this time. And the first one is Ms. Mary Ann Hendricks. And Ms. Hendricks, if you would, please give your address.
My name is Mary Ann Hendricks. I live at 2790 Waterwood Drive in Chandler, Texas. Uh, that's outside the city limits of Chandler. Um, Judy Hall, President of the Henderson County Humane Society, and I were drive, were running an errand for the society when we came across a pit bull-looking mix. Uh, that was nothing more than a bag of bones. Judy's car is stark, stocked for every animal contingency, so we pulled over and gave it a bowl of food. I poured another bowl closer to the car, and then a third bowl I sent inside the car, and the dog jumped in. We drove to the shelter where the dog refused to come out and started to show some hostility. Amy Lambert, the shelter director, and another employee performed what I can, what can only be called a graceful ballet with catch poles, and very unexcitedly and expertly got the dog out of the car. Experience counts for a lot. I never asked the outcome of that situation because really I knew. I knew it would be held for the mandatory period of seventy-two hours for the owner to reclaim, but it obviously had no owner or not one that should have the right to reclaim an animal and then starve. They fed it generously and gave it a safe place to rest and sleep. If after a thorough assessment it was adoptable, I know efforts were made for that outcome. But if it was not adoptable, it was humanely treated. As a taxpayer, I know a county facility like that is desperately needed in this county. I keep hearing that the, the shelter reformers are separate from the Cedar Creek Humane Society, and I certainly hope so. On December 19th, 2019, in the one and only article appearing in the Athens Review about this change in, in running the shelter, the reformer said how something was put in action, quote, "18 months ago," or approximately April or May of 2018, that finally was paying off. I found on the internet and in public records an event that lined up date-wise, uh, with a lot of rhetoric and threats. I couldn't find much about how the shelter and the shelter director were cleared of all the false charges. I sincerely hope the Cedar Creek Humane Society never finds themselves on the wrong end of the reformers. Publicly, there's nothing further about the shelter until the article in December 2019, an article which throws out an 80% euthanasia rate. You all have in your hands a manual count of the last four months of last year that shows a much lower euthanasia rate. It might even be under the national average. I remember at Gunbarrel City Meeting in October, Cedar Creek Humane Society was asked their euthanasia rate, and the reply was, "They did not kill animals to make room." They were asked again, and I remember the reply was that it was around the national rate. At the time, I thought it odd that a number was not given. In any event, I'm glad that our rate is nowhere near 80%, and I wish that that number could be reported in the paper. As a taxpayer in this county, two numbers struck me a few weeks ago at a workshop. Two years ago, the last year, the Henderson County Humane Society ran the shelter, $62,000 of city and county money was provided, with the remaining quarter million provided by the society itself. Now the number I'm hearing is 350,000 a year. That's a huge difference from 62,000 to 350,000. And so I'm just wondering, is this yearly contribution, uh, going to be matched by anything from, uh, the Cedar Creek Humane Society? And finally, I've known Norma Lambert and her family since we wound up on adjoining lots on Lake Palestine some 37 years ago. I found her to be laser-focused on her passions with a work ethic beyond belief. Once she got involved in the Henderson County Humane Society as a board member, and they were asked to take over the local animal shelter, she became an expert on animal law, and the county was lucky to have her services, and also those of David Jensen as architect and builder of the present facilities. Thirty years of having to compartmentalize the unfortunate part of your job is a lot to ask of a person. She is now focused on affordable spay neuter, which frankly should be mandatory spay neuter to further reduce the euthanasia rate at the shelter. I wish the new management all the luck in the world in running the shelter. I know they're thinking, hallelujah, hallelujah, this day has come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual requesting to speak is Ronald Wirick. If you would, please, sir, come forward.
Thank y'all for letting me speak today. I'm Ronald Wirick. I live at 128 Harmon Road, Gunbarrel City, Texas. I'm here to discuss on, uh, item 14 here. We've been down a, a road over in Gunbarrel, over the same, deal's fixing to take place here, y'all are fixing to decide one way or another, and I really want y'all to really decide, look at this real deeply, what it's going, how it's going to impact all the cities around Henderson County, of what y'all are fixing to do here, because I haven't got the total, uh, picture of what it's going, what it's going to cost the county for another organization to come in here and take over. But in my book, if we were doing something like this, I would look at, uh, going out for bids and getting a, a bid process where you've got more, uh, people involved instead of just one source of, uh, uh, organization coming in and doing, doing, doing this for the county before we jump, where y'all jump into it, uh, head over heels. We jumped into something and ended up costing us a ton of change over, uh, Gunbarrel City, and I'd hate to see the county get stuck in something like this here and it ends up costing the taxpayers a ton of money for what should have been looked at a lot closer and a lot better. I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Next individual that's wishing to speak is Ms. Norma Lambert.
Good morning, Court. My name is Norma Lambert. I live at 2750 Waterwood Drive in Chandler, Texas. I'm here representing the Henderson County Humane Society, uh, the organization I have been involved with for 33 years. For 31 years, the Animal Shelter in Athens has followed policies based on evaluation of each animal's status as a pet animal, along with a pointed evaluation of each potential adopter to find new owners who are responsible, law-abiding persons. Not taking these steps to protect each animal from a terrible future is a deliberate act of cruelty to those animals. The Henderson County Humane Society built a facility designed to make use of those policies. The society built the facility with limited outside help, and our hope is that the policies and the physical compound as our legacy will be recognized and supported by our county as the work of the Athens Animal Shelter goes on. We, as the Henderson County Humane Society, are a long way from being done. As we continue our spay neuter project down the street, uh, at our Litterbox Thrift Store, we will be developing other projects to help animals, such as early age education, addition to the animal ordinance, et cetera. We welcome anyone who wants to help us with those projects, because we're here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, gentlemen, uh, the item before us is the, um, agreement, and county attorney Clint Davis, who has been helping us wade through this.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have the agreement, you have the original that I had drafted and prepared. Um, I had sent it to the attorney for the, the shelter, the Tool Shelter. Their attorney reviewed it, made some red line changes. You have a copy of that red line change document. Um, overwhelmingly, there were more grammatical changes and some cleaning up than there were substantive, there were a few substantive changes. And then I have a bullet point of, I don't know, I didn't count them, about, about six to eight items here that I wanted to talk to you about today. And these would be items in the contract that we either haven't made a decision on or that haven't been, been solidified in the agreement. And then lastly, if, I'll answer any questions that, that you guys have. Because of some of these are unknown, um, the Commissioners understand, we put this on the agenda as an action item today. The Court may or may not be ready to take action on it today, and, and that's on any agenda item, you guys know that, you're always free to, to pass it, go back to work on some of these items, or if you're comfortable and ready to go, we can go. Uh, one thing that I, I, I think that, that both the, um, the county and the Tool Shelter representatives are, are, are comfortable with at this point, uh, would be the building maintenance. Uh, building maintenance is not something that's addressed in our original agreement with Athens. It has come up in discussions, um, between myself and the, the folks from the Tool Shelter. Um, our, I just want to make sure, and I know Commissioner Cheney is, is new to the Court since all of this happens, our agreement with the City of Athens was more of a gentleman's agreement. It was not in that contract or that agreement, and, and essentially, any of the day-to-day maintenance on that building would be covered by the county. And what we're going to ask is if, if this agreement were approved, any of the day-to-day maintenance of the building would be covered by the Tool Shelter. If it were a substantial item, an air conditioner go out, something such as that, structural item, building needs a new roof, uh, our agreement with Athens, we would just address those on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, they own the, the property, they own the building. In our two years of doing this, this has not been an issue. I can think of one thing that has come up, and that was the sealing of the floor. Uh, we had some floors out there that the state wanted us to put down some sealer. We reached out to the City of Athens. City of Athens said, "We'll buy the se- sealer, we'll apply the, we'll buy the product. If you guys apply it..." Our county folks went out there, or, or were to, I don't know if that's been done or not, but, but, you know, we agreed to, to put it down. Um, that's the way I would envision that it would work going forward in the future. If the shelter had a need, they would come to us and the City of Athens, and, and we would, would make that decision at that time. And like I said, I, I think, I'm going to look at, at Ms. Lindell, she's nodding yes, so I think we're okay with not having that in this agreement. If you're wondering, well, why don't you put it in the agreement? Is, what we are doing is, is the, this agreement would be subject to the City of Athens approving it, and so what we are doing is assigning our duties and responsibilities under the City of Athens agreement. We are assigning those to a third party, which would be the Tool Shelter. And, and so in some respects, our, our ability to change our agreement with Tool is somewhat limited by our agreement with the City of Athens. In other words, if we wanted to put in something different about the maintenance of the building, we would have to go back to the city, because we can't make that decision for the City of Athens, if, if you're wondering. So I don't think that's an issue, but I did want to mention it, and I didn't want to put it on the record, what I have represented it to Tool, just in case there's any questions that, that you will know that's the discussion. Uh, we have a property issue, personal property items is what I'm referring to. Uh, when we took over the shelter from, from, um, the Humane Society, uh, we had a list of property that was donated to the county. Uh, that list of property, um, was presented to the Court, and the Court actually took action, and we received that as our property. We need to decide what we want to do with that property, and, and I can think of two different avenues. Uh, I can't make this decision, it's a decision for the Court. One avenue would be we turn around and, and we get a list of what's over there, and we, at some point in the, the time in the future, we would turn around and donate that at the time they take over to the Tool Shelter. The other avenue would be, um, is all of these items are going to be under our dollar amount or threshold for our audit office to tag as county property and include on our inventory. I'm saying that, that we make an exception to that, we go over, we tag some of those personal property items, we compile a list of the items that we're going to tag, and, and then we say, anything with a county property tag on it remains property of Henderson County, anything that's untagged, there are going to be a lot of these things, or, or small items that you couldn't tag if you wanted to. Blankets, dog toys, uh, even water buckets and feed buckets and things like that. I wouldn't envision us going through, trying to keep track of all that and tagging it. There's probably some other things that we probably, or may want to retain, um, you know, dog kennels and dog crates, and, and I don't know what else, I haven't been over there and walked through, but, you know, there may very well be some items that we want to go through and make sure that we retain ownership. That's something that, that, that needs to be decided upon. The effective date, um, we need to decide if we were to approve this, there's a blank right there at the first paragraph, as to when we want to make it effective. Tool has, 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 they've been, been gearing up and, and working towards this for some time, and I think they could be ready to go in a few weeks, probably sooner in all honesty than we would be ready to go. Um, again, that's up to you guys. Whatever we set, the, the only real consideration from a timing standpoint for us, uh, I mean, only consideration outside of just the transitioning, um, from, from county to, to a, a third party, would be the City of Athens has to approve it. Uh, the City of Athens, their council meets on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, so their next council meeting is on Monday, the ninth, and their next council meeting after that would be Monday, the 23rd. We would have to have it to them. I think their cutoff is similar to ours on the Thursday before those two dates. Uh, so any action, if you were to take action today, as long as we had it to the council by Monday, the request by, by the Thursday before the ninth, they could put it on that agenda, so on and so forth, to make sure we give them time to look at it and approve. The big one on page three, I say it's the big one, um, it's the one we all, all, uh, probably struggle with the most, and that's the, the dollars. Um, that, 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 uh, 3.1 is where I'm looking, but the payment has been blank in all of these drafts that have been exchanged back and forth. Um, we have not come down to a final number. Uh, the shelter's numbers, I do not have what their budget was. Their budgeted number was, was higher than what our current budget was. When Wade, they went through and, and they, they, uh, took, um, took all of our animal counts, and they took our past expenditures, they looked at the numbers that were coming through, they prepared a budget based on what they know their budget is at Tool. Uh, their budget number was higher than our current budget. Um, and so what they have agreed to is that they would agree to operate it at the same cost that it's costing, uh, the county right now in budget-wise, which is $326,000 a year.
I would like to, of that 300, $261,112.17 is county money, $81,000 is the City of Athens, and $30,000 was what was, um, brought in through fees with the municipalities.
Right, and, and to, to Councilman Wirick's comment, you know, he said that, uh, before we, we, uh, we, we spend, uh, you know, a whole bunch of money of the, the taxpayer's money is what he said, you know, we should, we should take our time and, and analyze it, and, and, you know, what I would say to that, first of all, is we're already spending a whole bunch of money on, taxpayer money on, on stray dogs and cats. Uh, this is what we're spending every single year, and it's unfortunate that people don't realize that. You know, the public doesn't realize what this issue and what this problem is costing our county taxpayers every single year. And then you combine that with the money that we're already giving the Tool Shelter, uh, you know, all combined, municipality- you know, all combined, municipalities and county both, we're approaching half a million dollars that we're spending on the care of animals. So it's already costing the taxpayers a lot of money every single year to provide these services. That is their number, the judge is correct, $65,000 is the biggest contributor of that, comes from the City of Athens. We have another $15,000 is typically the number with $71,000 was what we had budgeted in there for contracts with other municipalities. We had looked at adding two municipalities to that before we started this transition process, which was Maybank and Gumbrell Cities, but we have never acted on those contracts with those two cities. So, you know, that, the other thing that I wanted to point out on the numbers that I think is important, again, I'm giving this to you guys as information, I want to give you all as much information as you would like to have. Y'all know me, sometimes I'll give you more information than you would like to have. Although that is our budgeted amount, our 2019 actual expenditures was $183,531.72. There's a little bit of an issue there with the fact that we are actually applying some expenditures from 2019, we're not paying them until 2020, so they're coming out of the 20 budget. But then you can also turn around and say, yes, but out of that actual number for 2019, we also had some 2018 expenditures that were, so, again, even though our budget is at $260,000, we're probably looking closer to actually spending about $200,000 right now out of the county budget. So their number of 265 would be somewhat of an increase for the county. Again, that's up to you guys to consider and give me some direction as to what you want to do with that number. One thing you are getting in exchange for any increase is, they have agreed to our request of locking this in for a three-year period. And it would at least lock that price into three-year to where, you know, we've had previous meetings about this, you know, where I said, you know, I don't think we necessarily want to go into this where we hamstring them, where they have to come back to us next year and say, "We already need an increase, we already need more money." So we were trying to look at locking them in for a three-year in which they have agreed Any questions on the number or anything else?
Does any of those numbers of the 260, $260,000, does that include employee?
That includes all of our, that includes everything that we spent. So all your salaries and your benefits, which I want to say are about $100,000, they're a little shy, I want to say it's like $96,000, is about $100,000 of that is in your salaries and your employee benefits.
Question?
Can I add, we do accrue expenses to the property year. So 2019 expenses that we get in January are going back to the 2019 year.
They do go back.
That's not what I got from your office.
We spoke with Lynn, that's what her intentions were, we accrued those.
Right. Because the actual showed to be 183,531.72, and then we had about $10,000, $85,000, $9,500 that would be built to 20, that were actually incurred in 19, which would put it at 192, that's why I was just kind of rounding up, 192.586.
We'll pay it.
You can see I've got very specific numbers that came from your office.
We'll pay it in 20, but that's what she deserved, 2019 payments, or accrued back.
Back to it.
They're paid in 20.
They just haven't been calculated back here today.
But the expense is put back in 20.
Right, yeah. Any other questions about?
No. To remind the court and to inform the public, what brought this to the forefront was our budget session, June, July, and August. We're looking at to meet all of the requirements that our societies requiring of these animal shelters, we were looking at $100,000 to $125,000 increase just to do adoptions. $125,000.
I think, and I know we have had, I also want to remind the public, because there's been some comments that I particularly take exception with that made it maybe sound, and I'm not saying that's what was intended by the commenters, but kind of make it sound like we just showed up today and, you know, here we are going to sign a contract. I can assure you, I've been working on this for the last five months. We've had workshops, we've had hearings, we've had meeting after meeting after meeting. You know, there are some great inequalities in our system right now. Gumbrell, who we've heard from their council today, they do about a third of the numbers. Their numbers are right there at one-third of what the City of Athens's numbers are. And we have said openly in those meetings that City of Athens is contributing $115,000 for three times the numbers of Gumbrell City. And yet Gumbrell is frustrated that the $5,000 that they want to pay isn't represent, well, where's the equity in that for the City of Athens people?
Wait, wait, please, sir.
And so our current system, again, we've had those discussions about the inequalities and how inequitable our system is. There's no way you can slice that out without going through, there has got to be a better system. Some of that, too, is created, which, again, you guys know, we've had that discussion about the fact that county government is now in direct competition with a nonprofit that's doing it on its own. And I think that lends itself to a bad situation.
And that was a part of the discussion. The issue that we had was, and Commissioner McCam put it best, there's no way government is going to do it cheaper than private or a nonprofit. One thing is, is that donations dry up, and when I say dry up, those of the value, you can ask anyone that has ever been a part of these facilities, that's what drives the majority of your facility revenue. And with the issues of adoptions, for the county to have individuals to be able to do adoptions and run the facility, we were going to have to look at adding two more head count, not including the supporting equipment. We lost the donations of animal food from Walmart or the corporation because, don't get a tax write-off to a certain degree in the corporate tax when you donate like that to a governmental facility. There's many number of factors that brought us to this.
Legal claims. We could add on, that's not part of that budget because we don't budget out our legal expenses, but we've had some legal claims in the last two years that I'm sure you could add another, especially with my time in dealing with, you know, open records requests and complaints to the Attorney General's Office and all of the other things, you could easily add another $30,000 or $40,000 a year that it's costing the taxpayers on top of any budget amount to deal with all of that stuff.
Two and a half years ago, and I believe that's correct, we were presented with the facility shutting down. And we put the call out for organizations to come then. Not one organization was able to come forward at the time and do it, to run the facility because, believe me, the county did not wish to be in the shelter business. It was something that we felt that we needed to do because of just exactly what you know is going on in every neighborhood all over the county. So we stepped in and took on this burden, and they're right, we went from $62,000 we were providing to over $200,000 like that because the need was there, the need was required. Here we are, two years later, and we have an organization wishing to step up because when you take into account not only the demand, you also take into account what the Texas Legislature did to county governments in the last session, cutting our revenue capability from 8% growth to 3.5%. That $125,000 we're talking about, that's 25% of the revenue that we could take in in any one given year just for the animal shelter. That's not counting raises, health insurance, gasoline, electricity, and everything else that it takes. Added individuals at the sheriff's office, we're in need of more prosecutors, more courtrooms. It comes down to delineating and prioritizing, that's what brought us here today. We need the service. But if we have to rob Peter and pay Paul to run this facility, which one do you want to give up? What do you want to cut? Because the state legislature capped our ability to do much of this. Gentlemen?
I'll say the same thing you said, and I want everybody to know that we're not trying to get out of our financial responsibility. We're not doing it because it's going to save us a bunch of money. It's not going to save us any money to do this, but I'll agree with, and I hate that that is part of the problem, is that we have to use taxpayer money to take care of something that somebody else has neglected. You know, this is an easy fix. These dogs and cats running all over the country, it's an easy fix, but we don't do it. And it's a shame that we have to spend upwards of half a million dollars of taxpayer money to tend to stray animals. I mean, maybe if this would get out in the public and they find out how much money we are spending, people would start looking at it and say, "Hey, why you got that dog over there with 15 puppies, three times, twice a year, and you got six of them in your backyard?" You know? So it's going to take that to get out in the public, to get something done on this, or nothing's going to ever change. As the population of Henderson County increases, the amount of dogs and cats is going to increase if nothing is done. But we're not trying to get out of our obligation. But I'll agree with Judge McKinnon, when we got in it, most of us on the court, that are still left on the court, didn't want to be in the dog and cat business, didn't want to be in the shelter business. We think, I don't believe the county, the government is the best opportunity to make a difference in this situation. But we were given sufficient time by Henderson County Humane Society to check around and look around and visit, and like he said, no other shelter could step up and take its place. So the county had to come in and take over. But since the day we took over, I think most of us have been looking for somebody else to come in and help us. Because I don't believe government is the one that should be taking care of these animals. I think these nonprofits should be. They have a better opportunity to do it than we do. And just like the judge said, they can get a lot more donations that the county and the government can't get. They're going to get the volunteers that the government and county don't get. We get a few, but not the numbers they're going to get. So I just want everybody to know, we're not trying to make it look like we're just trying to get, do away with our responsibility, but we are trying to find a better way to do it. And it might take time to find out if this is the better way. But if we don't do it, we won't know. And we hadn't had any other organizations step up and say that they were interested in it.
Commissioner?
Well, I sat here, I don't know, two or three months ago and told you I don't talk politically correct, and I'm not going to do that today, or start today. Like both of these gentlemen have said, my counterparts' donations, you can see from when in 2017 or 18, I took office in 2019, that the donations went down. When the government has control of it, everybody says the county will take care of it. And so we're into that half a million dollars that everyone's talked about from where we were at 62, so the county's almost gone up to $400,000 putting their stuff in their money, taxpayers' money in there. Education, Commissioner McCam has stated two or three meetings that our problem is not the kids that want the dog, it's the kids' parents that don't take the responsibility and educate and do education. And how do we get that? We don't know, but we have to start somewhere. The county shelter has done great things, Ms. Lambert has done great things, and I think our number-one deal is, is that when we went in 2018 or 2019 to put it out there and said, "Somebody come help Henderson County, we have a problem here," nobody stepped up. And so we've been trying to find a way. This is not an overnight vote, or will be an overnight vote. We've spent countless hours, along with our county attorney, has spent countless hours trying to figure out the best way to spend taxpayers' money. Is the Seven Points or the Tool Shelter our best place to go to? They're the only ones that stepped up. They do great things over there, have done great things to improve their shelter. It's a toss-up, but like I said before, and they have said, they have been the ones to step up and say, "We're going to help run the shelter and help educate the kids and do what we need to do to fix our problem." We know that we have people out there, like Chuck, I'm sorry, Commissioner McCam said, that every three to six months, Commissioner, you're more of a animal expert, gestation period, six months?
Just figure twice a year.
Say that again?
Just figure twice a year.
Two to three times a year. Mr. Fred that lives way out there in the back row brings in three litter of puppies, sometimes seven, sometimes 10, and sometimes four. And he pays us $20, and then we have to spend money to take care of that litter of pups times three. What do you do? Tell Mr. Fred to bring his dog in, and we're going to spay, neuter, whatever we need to do. But that also costs money. So we're putting it out there, and I don't know if we'll go to a vote today, but I think I have some personal issues that, there's some points that I have that I would still not settle with. So we need help, and Tool Shelter stepped up and said they're ready to take on the deal. That's all I have, Judge.
I didn't go through the last budget that you had, and because of that, of course, I want what's best for the county and what's best for the taxpayers, but I'm personally not ready to vote on an agreement today. So that's just my opinion.
Well, the county attorney has delineated the largest areas, which is the funding amount, which the breakout I have is $261,000 of county money is what I have, plus the other. I'm not sure, is it the same as to what City of Athens has committed in the past?
Yes.
Okay, that exact same?
Because this is an assignment, and don't jump in there just to make sure everybody understands that because this is an assignment of our rights and obligations under our original contract, City of Athens will continue to pay us the same amount of money. They will pay the $65,000 to us, and we would make all of the distributions over to the Tool Shelter. Now, we would be canceling our contracts with municipalities that we currently have agreements with, which would be Cammer, Nodwell, and we want to overturn on Friday. Which is why we didn't enter into a new long-term contract with either Gumbrell or Maybank, is because those would have taken effect in January, as all of our contracts do, and if we knew that this was on the horizon, we didn't want to turn around and enter into brand-new contracts with new municipalities and then turn around and have to cancel them in two months or less than two months. And so, but I think there's only two. And so, so, but I think there's only two others that would affect, and then we would turn around and, and cancel those, and then they would be back into negotiating with, with the new shelter. And I think our contract, it provides them some time on that. I can't remember off the top of my head if it's 90 or 180 days, but it's one of the others.
Okay.
Do we have to get our agreement ready and send it to Athens before they vote on their agreement to, to continue?
So, yes, the steps is, we would approve it, we would sign, the, the Tool Shelter would have to sign off on it, and then we would submit our signed agreement over to the City of Athens. They would place it on the city council, and the city council of Athens would also have to approve this assignment or all of this.
Now, we, we talk about the City of Athens as cash value, there is that ink and match in water, and what else is involved in that?
And, and all of that would remain untouched, and again, that's the, the good thing about doing it, is we're just assigning over our obligations under it, is the ink and use of the building, they provide all the water for it, they provide the trash service, the trash pickup, and they provide exterior, outside the perimeter fence, grounds maintenance for the, the exterior of the premises.
So basically, that, what they requested, I believe, was much higher than what our, when I, when I say our, the cash we receive from City of Athens, and the part that we put in, the original request was for more than what we have to fund, that we keep it at the 2020 levels.
That's correct. They agreed, the, the shelter agreed to reduce what they were requesting down to the 326, which is exactly what our 2020 budget is, it's what we have budgeted.
Okay. And that's locked in for three years?
Three years, right. I, I know I've been told I'm naive, and, and maybe I am, I still honestly believe that there's a better approach to this, this issue of, of animals. I still think there's a way we can make those numbers go down, and, and that's where, like I said, probably naive, but I, I still see that in three years, if done properly, if the numbers start going down, then the dollar should start going down. And we've spent a lot of time of the proactive steps that, that I think could be taken to eliminate some of the problems of the two commissioners, Commissioners Tully and Commissioner McCam talked about, you know, where we have these frequent liars that are constantly driving those numbers up, because you can, you can set your calendar by the gestation cycle of a dog or cat, that they can show up, another litter of pups, another same mama dog. We've got to be more proactive, and how do we stop that? You know, we would be better off paying to have mama dog fixed, or cutting those people off, saying, you're not going to be allowed to bring them in. And, and so, again, my hopes, honest and sincere hopes would be that in three years, when we come back to looking at this, that whoever's running the shelter at that time can come back to us and say, hey, through policy changes, we have actually reduced those numbers down.
As part of the contract, though, we will still be receiving monthly reports.
We put, we put a reporting requirement in there, that was something that we had to add in, that was not, of course, part of our agreement, and we, we are under no contractual obligation to report to the City of Athens. We do send them numbers if they request it, but, but that's actually in the contract, that we will receive monthly reports from the shelter on all of their numbers as to exactly what those look like.
So they stated in some of the meetings that we, or that they were going to start a new 501(c)(3) between, Tool would be, would be separate than what the Athens Shelter would be.
That is correct, that is their plan, yes.
And so, as a Henderson County taxpayer, for the residents and the public out there, that none of the money that, that, that we, that we receive here at the county would be transferred over to the Tool Shelter if they were running low or whatever, they couldn't take that in, in consideration, all our money would have to be spent at our local shelter.
I think that the best way I can answer that is, all of our money would be, would be going to the newly created 501(c)(3) that is operation, operating this shelter here. I cannot stand here and promise it, nor do I think they would, that they will not share resources of some sort. And I think that just makes sense, you can probably gain some efficiencies. You know, there, there may be times where they could move in employees from here to there, and I'm not saying this is part of their operation, I don't know that detail, but I'm just saying, I can envision a situation where they're going to have resources of both organizations, and, and we may be the beneficiary of some of that. You know, it may not always be looking at that, that, you know, our money's flowing from here to there, we may be the beneficiary of receiving assets of the Tool Shelter over here in Athens. You know, they, they have done, and I know they just acquired a new transport trailer, and they're doing a lot of transports of, of these animals up to the northeast coast to, to, I guess I should say, up north in general, to, to increase their adoptions. You know, I would envision there to be some, some, some shared allocation of, of those transports. You know, it wouldn't make sense to take one trailer only from Tool and one trailer, trailer only from Athens. So I imagine there will be some shared resources, but our, our money will all be given to the Athens Shelter. We also put in an audit provision, where our audit office has the right to audit their finances, so we can go in and see, if someone thinks there's a glaring problem with, with the money that we're giving all going to Tool, then we can go in and then look at that.
Following that same line, and we currently give a donation to the Tool Shelter, and I can't remember off the top of my head, 20, 20,000, something like that. I'm sorry? That donation, that's been specifically for that facility, as it was set up under City of Crete. We continue that?
I think it, as it stands today, again, that's one of those, those judgment calls on the court, but I think as it stands today, yes, it would continue. Of course, it's subject to being reviewed at, at any given budget cycle, because of the state, state mandates that you mentioned, I know that's going to be backed up this year, and we're looking at it earlier probably than later. But I think that's something that the court would be free to look at in budget, but I, what's, what's being considered here today is, we are only looking at what's going on with the Athens Shelter, and it would remain unchanged, definitely, for this year.
Well, the, the reason for that was that, at the time, we wanted two healthy shelters, and they do take, as a matter of fact, we've had currently more animals taken to that shelter this year to date than we have our own, and that's because of logistics. You know, that was one of the reasons why we wanted that shelter, is to handle that area. So there's some play in here that will need to get mapped out. You said you had a few, few other items?
Effective date? How long does that, I mean, we did something today, we'd wait till next week, April 1st?
In my opinion, you would be looking at about 30 days out. And, and again, I can tell you that's longer than the window that Tool said their minimum would be, they said they could be ready at any given time, within a two to three week period. Yeah, so I'm thinking you would be looking at about a month out, if you did something, something today.
So you?
From the employee transition, this has been said before, and I want to remind everybody, because I've seen some, some variations out there, but they have indicated they would keep on every employee that we had, that's going to stay on with them. So, you know, none of our current employees are going to involuntarily lose their employment as a result of this change, and I think that's something that's important, that, that should be said, is there's, there's nobody losing their employment involuntarily, what's been represented to us. So, so from a transition thing, if anybody's thinking, you know, notice to people or notice to employees, I don't think you'll have that issue, and they will keep their, their current salaries. One of their savings that they have over us is, is their overall compensation package, because our benefit packages are so high, but they're going to keep our employees on at their current salaries.
Okay, so?
I would, I would went to all five, five lowest, uh, commissioners, of course.
Oh, I agree. I'm delineating those few things, what was the dollar amount, effective date, inventory?
That was really it. The, the building, the building maintenance is just something I wanted to, to just give you guys information on, I don't think there's anything you guys have to do or consider there, unless you disagree with something that I said in there. But essentially, all I said is, if they had a significant building maintenance issue, they're going to come back to, to us, and, and we'll address it on a case-by-case basis. And the City of Athens has been really, really good, they have a member that serves on our advisory committee that's now chaired by, by Commissioner Tully, and of course, City of Athens has a standing representative on that committee, and, and they've been really good, really responsive, to, to any time we needed something there, and I just don't see that being an issue going forward.
Okay. No, 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 you're fine. We can start the inventory process, we can get with the shelter director, arguably, she, she knows the facility better than anyone and what's in it, and we can begin delineating.
Which items we may want to pack?
Right. Okay. And then, on the effective date, we work off of a calendar year. Having the effective date in here, that's what our funding stream is. Do we see issue of this thing not lining up, it's getting its guaranteed three-year?
I'd rather prorate the year, because we heard it's something that's going to be funny, and find the perfect order in 2020.
Correct.
And I would be the expectation, that it would be quarterly, yeah, yeah. And then, or would you do it pay as quarterly, or? We all, it would be quarterly. That's in the, that's in the, but, but yes, and I think the expectation would be, would be prorated for this first year. If you wanted to make it a clean break, again, you can even push that out to, to May 1st, which would be the end of the fourth.
Well, the, the reason that I look at that is, is because, what is the termination clause of the contract? If early termination?
The, we, we can terminate based on budget appropriations, that's always going It's on page. By mutual agreement, obviously, with a 120 days' notice, by mutual agreement, by non-appropriate appropriation of funds, which means that we non-appropriate funds, we can't appropriate funds during the budget cycle, it's over until the fall of this year, we can terminate. And then, for cause, for reasons of cause, either party can, can terminate with 180 days' notice, so six months' notice for cause, which the only failure of our cause would be the failure of the paper, if they terminated with 180 days' notice.
Okay, because, given the situation of an early termination, being able to gear up, pick up, to begin running it again, or of just clearing the facility and choosing not to run it, having that timeframe in there, because the county is under no obligation to run a facility legally, and being sure that we have that time to decide what we're going to do and get everything in motion based upon what we choose.
I think you would have six months, and so, you know, even on the budget, kind of preparation, they would have quite a few months on the budget cycle, the process to know what's going on.
Commissioner, anything else? All right. Well, we've still got, got some work to do. I feel better about where we're at. This is, this is not an easy decision, but I will tell you, from my point of view, this is a financial decision. To be real simple for myself, we are under the gun to provide services that we cannot provide as efficiently, as efficiently as the private sector. But one thing that I am concerned about is what was brought up, was the quarantine facilities. Now, we need to have some of those discussions.
I may have missed that part.
There, there, stated earlier was that, that facility is the only one with a quarantine facility within the organization, so apparently there is a large need for that, outside of just what we, the county, have been doing. So, I heard that mentioned as a concern. So, anything else?
Because Commissioner Thomas is not here, I'd like to make a motion to table this until, oh, we have a forum, each commissioner's opinion on it, because he went through the budget, I didn't, and others' commissioners bid, so I'd like to make a motion to table it until possibly the next court.
Okay.
Second, thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner McCam, to table to the next, next regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
County attorney, is there anything else you'd like to state before we table? Okay. Thank you very much, and we know this is a, an issue that is important to the community as a whole, and we have, we've struggled with this for a long time, so please bear with us, we will try to understand all points of view, and we have, and will continue to do that. And we cannot thank enough these individuals who either do it for free or do it for pay. It is a passion and a calling to them, but it's about the best operation that we can come up with for the expenditures of taxpayer money. So, anything else, gentlemen, before we move on? All in favor of the motion to table? Item 15, receive financial reports, and we have several, pardon? We have none.
I do.
Item 16, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts' cash sheets. Ms. Harris?
I do have payroll totals for biweekly three and biweekly four.
Questions for Ms. Harris? If not, entertain a motion to approve both.
Someone?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, second by Commissioner Cheney, to approve payroll distributions for biweekly number three and four. All those in favor? Item passes.
I also have our January account cash sheet.
Any questions for Ms. Harris? If not, entertain a motion to approve the accounts' cash sheets for the ending period of January 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Cheney, to approve the accounts' cash sheet ending, ending period of January 2020. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, madam. Item 17, consider, consider and take action on submitted contracts. Gentlemen, we have one in the backup here that is with Johnson Controls, it's a metastest system. This system is a, actually a server that works in the jail This system is a, actually, a server that works in the jail controlling our HVAC system and working with our smoke ventilation system. For individuals technical enough to remember, our current server's running on an XP software, and we've got to bump it up and get it brought up. It's the original system from the build-out 11 years ago, 12 years ago, somewhere in that range. This is a system that will increase quite a few capabilities with the modern era of being able to control from an out and issues like that. There are many times in the sheriff can speak to of issues at 2:00 in the morning or at any time and having availability of maintenance staff. This will go a long way into helping to alleviate some of that. The option here that we're asking for is $33,466.34. And you see all of the items that it lists in here as far as its capabilities and what it will entail. We have looked at this for, help me sheriff, six months. It was back in latter of 19. And we were actually looking at maybe getting away from Johnson's Controls in this particular area because they are a proprietary product that you have to have them to work on. But the thing that came through is the quality that we have, we do not have an issue. It works. And when you have the well-being of, what's today's population, Judge? Uh, Judge, Sheriff's Office?
Inmates. South facility, room 380 this morning.
380.
And then, four weeks, we're getting 60 employees on the street.
Right. So that's what we're proposing here today. I'll be happy to answer any questions on it.
I have one.
No, sir.
Well, if we could then get a motion to approve the upgrade to the Johnson's Controls Medisys system contract with the judge's authorization signed.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, second by Commissioner McCam. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Next item, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits. Do we have any, Ms. Wilson?
None.
None. Item 19, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Ms. Lee?
And I didn't have budget amendments. These all relate to cleaning up Roden Bridge, special sanitation that ran short this year, along with fixing everything for your lateral road. Darlene, check.
Questions for Ms. Lee? Thank you. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 20, consider and take action.
Judge, your.
On payment of bills.
Yes, court, I have three sets this morning. The first one is for 2019, $34,615.17.
Commissioner Tully, questions?
I had mine answered before.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none on those.
Entertain a motion.
So move. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the FY19 bills of $34,615.17. All those in favor? Item passes.
For 2020, I have $363,797.60.
Commissioner Tully?
Again, mine was answered before court.
Commissioner McCam?
No. No, I'll make a motion to approve $363,797.60.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the physical year 2020 bills in the amount of $363,797.60. All those in favor? Item passes.
The last one I have was for $350.50. This was for the January sales tax and cleanup on the state base floor.
Any questions?
I had none at that time.
I'll move to approve, second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tully to approve the sales tax bills in the amount of $350.50. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 21, consider and take action on submitted Platts.
No Platts.
No Platts. Item 22, open and consider bids. Again, to remind everyone, early voting is going on right now, so get by and exercise your right to vote.
I think yesterday it was from 7:00 to 7:00, now it's from 8:00 to 5:00.
8:00 to 5:00 tonight, today.
Yep, and on through the rest of the week.
Rest of the week. Fantastic. Item 23, consider and take action to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you very much for being here today. We do appreciate it.